Morning and welcome to our September first meeting of the board commissioners. Welcome to everyone and we'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the question flag.
The United States of America and as a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any further comments this morning? In order to approve the minutes of the August meeting.
Second.
Movement second on the approval of the minutes of the August 18th meeting. additions, conditions or corrections. There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, so move. This is your good morning.
Good morning. We have receipts, August 30th, November 31st, two million four hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred thirty dollars in monthly access. This is total cash of four million eight hundred and five thousand twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Our expenditures this week, which is million seven hundred and eight thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-three cents. And this is cash payment is one hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars, five cents. Meaning as balance of one million four hundred and five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars in monthly access. I'm going to motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Sorry. Moving second there, we approve the treasurer's report. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or same signs, so move.
Just for your information, our line of credit has been canceled out.
Michelle. Get yourself in, you may proceed.
Michelle Salye, Director of Human Resources. Under resignations and terminations, Brian Ryder, full-time law clerk, court resignation effective September 16th. Michelle Wurder, part-time law clerk, resignation effective August 1st. Kina Torres, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective August 15th. Renee Ring, full-time developmental assistant, resignation effective August 15th. Sonia Wright, casual developmental assistant at the center. An renewal effective September 1st. And Ryan German, full-time deputy chair, resignation effective August 25th.
Moving second there, we approve those transactions and any comment or question. There are none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same signs, so move.
Under needs of absence, Jason Lad, from the Department of Emergency Services, four and a half week LOA, effective July 23rd, with a return date of August 4th. Derek Van Kovek, from domestic relations, one week leave of absence, effective September 23rd, expected return date of September 30th.
Make a motion to approve the two leaves of absence.
Okay, that motion's been approved, movement second there, any questions or comments? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Or same signs, so move.
Under changes of status, transfer, promotions, I have a motion to approve the agreement between the County of Lebanon and Chaco Orchid Local 464, to represent the telecommunicators and the Department of Emergency Services, to memorialize their collective understanding and temporarily adjust the trading model and compensation in Article 5 of the collective bargaining agreement in accordance with the terms and conditions outlined in said agreement, effective immediately. This agreement will remain in effect until both of the following conditions are met. One, 24 of the 28 full-time positions are at least two boards certified, and two, there are enough available CTOs to continue training new employees as well as staff covered by the union.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second there, we approve this motion between the county and the chocolate workers union. Any questions? Comments? Not on favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same signs, so move.
Jasmine Evans, change of status from full-time correctional officer to jail to casual part-time correctional officer, no change in her rate, effective September 4th. Christian Fodo, change of status from casual part-time correctional officer at the jail to full-time correctional officer, no change in his rate, effective September 4th. Audrey Howard, transfer from regular part-time office support one in voter registration to office support two in domestic relations at the rate of $1,077.16 per week, effective September 5th.
Move through.
Second.
It's the movement second there, we approve those transactions and any questions, comments? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or same signs, so move.
Under other transactions, children in youth would like to hire Leete Davis as a social service A1 slash case 8, at the rate of $1,077.16 per week, effective September 12th. Children in youth would also like to hire Angela Ginkulich as a social service A at the rate of $1,077.16 per week, effective September 12th. Central booking would like to hire Sarah Petrovic as a full-time booking agent at the rate of $14.35 per hour, effective September 6th. District Attorney's Office would like to hire Daniel Page as an assistant district attorney one, at the rate of $3,076,90 per week, effective October 10th. Domestic relations would like to hire Holly Hettering as office support two, at the rate of $1,077.16 per week, effective September 6th. The jail would like to hire Alicia Devitts as a admin assistant one, at the rate of $1,080.74 per week, effective September 6th. And if the voluntary court reports would like to hire the following two employees, both as general clerk C in the clerk of courts office, both at the rate of $896.47 per week, both effective September 6th, and that is Corinne Willingham and Jennifer Miller. And the public defender's office would like to hire Larissa Levere as a secretary B at the rate of $958.77 per week, effective September 12th.
I make a motion to approve the other transactions as presented.
Second. Moving second there, we approve those transactions and questions. Comments, discussion, there are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or same signs, so move.
Moving on the salary board, motion to approve all transactions, three, plus the following. Logan Lukart, salary increase, full-time telecommunicator two in the Department of Emergency Services, to the rate of $18.56 per hour, effective September 4th. And Jonathan Bell, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the jail, this is a one-time payment for 40 years of service, and is a one-time payment of $4,000, effective September 8th.
Oh. It's the movement second there, we approve the seven point transactions. Questions or comments? If that's a record for the longevity.
Four years. Those are the things.
No further discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same signs, so move. Thank you.
Morning. Good morning again. Good morning, grab me. Jack, introduce yourself and why you're here and then just proceed with your questions. So, my name is Jack Chico. I am the founder and chief executive of Ventura Real Estate, who happens to own Ventura Real Estate Development. He is here today to obtain the county's support and approval of a alerta that was approved by the Borough of Palmyra as further outlined in ordinance number 817. The details of the request and the basis for the alerta were shared with the commissioners on August 10th. I'm happy to go into those details again, if that's your interest. If there are any particular questions, you can go right into the questions. So this is your time, I can, I'm happy to manage it however you wish, just whatever you have the schedule. Sure, and everything offered, any questions? Sure, so the schedule represents a tax abatement of 100% for the first seven years. In year eight, nine, and 10, it reduces to 75, 50, and 25% respectively. Any questions? Chief, go on.
Yes. After you left at the last meeting, I had quite a bit of feedback from the public who also attended the school board meeting. And my trust is not the level it was. I want to be honest with you. Um, one of the things that was produced was, I think, something from your website, where you have it for sale for four and a half million dollars. One of the statements to me at the last meeting was that you developed your own properties. And so that was the opposite of what I heard at the last meeting. Um, I was informed that the school board had voted that that had not occurred. And in fact, there were things that were done and said there that brought to light that you wouldn't accept a reduced number of years for alerta. I think it was either three or five that was suggested. And that you would be charging similar to what they do in Hershey, which is about $2,000 amount. And the statement was, it's all or nothing for you in that you wanted the city, the county, and the school district alerta, or this would not go through. And so, and the other, the final thing that I was unclear about, I heard you say there's a lot across the street for the use of this building. But then it was said later, outside of this meeting, that the lot across the street was for a future project for something else. So there was a lot of, I don't know, it just wasn't solid information. And so I want to give you an opportunity, convince me that these points are all wrong.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to do exactly that. I made a note of the concerns. If I missed any, please remind me at the end, I'm going to take them in the order that you presented them. So first of all, we don't have a website. What you saw with respect to the property being advertised for sale is what I would call capital management 101, or investment management 101. It is prudent to understand every single one of your options at every stage of a project's life cycle. So we market the property to understand, okay, if push comes to shove, you can't get this project over the finish line. What options do we have? Well, we could sit and do nothing. We could sell it to the highest bidder, or we could do any number of other things. That's what we saw, that's what that listing was. I think what's more important is, what are my intentions? If my intentions were to make a quick buck, I can tell you certainty that the lion's share of the value of this project was created after two things happened. One, the building was cleaned out and all of the chemicals were disposed appropriately. And then, of course, my question. Secondly, the value was created when the zoning approvals were in hand. Okay, so if somebody had the intention of making a quick buck, walking away and moving on, that could have happened, it would have transpired a long time ago. I would not be subjecting myself to these meetings if my intention was to make a quick buck and move on. So I just wanted to-
Is the tax burden not transferable to the owner's person?
It is, but what I'm saying is the lion's share, the majority of the value in this property was created when the risk of environmental cleanup and jail time was eliminated, and the zoning approvals were in hand. That's all. Yes, of course there's value to alerta, if there wasn't, I wouldn't be here seeking it. So that's the first question. Did I address the sale price?
But again, there was an implication that the alerta was worth nothing to the owner, but it is.
Oh, absolutely, no, that wasn't my intention. If that was how it came across, I like to scratch that from the record. No, it absolutely has value without it. So this is the next point. The school board, I guess what I'll say, the first thing I'd like to say is that there's an ongoing dialogue with the school board, with a key member of the school board, so that's positive. Okay, I never made the comment that, for me, it was all or nothing. I'd like to reframe the issue. Building a luxury product at this site is more of a really nice-to-have than a necessity. And just like anything else in your life, that's a really nice-to-have, it comes with a price tag. Right? It just so happens that in today's environment, that price tag is 30% higher because of where we are with inflation and costs. When you run the numbers, when you run the numbers, no matter how you slice it, if you want to bring a true luxury product, so that doesn't count in Palmyra, you really can't do it without all three of the taxing authorities supporting what's in front of you there. It's really, really hard. It's really hard. Okay, and it's really hard because if you think about it financially, okay? I don't want to dive too deep into this, but just to give you a sense of how the financial dynamics work. To start off with, you're paying roughly $6 billion more to build the same building that your competitor has. Six miles or seven miles down the street, don't quote me on that, I don't know, but your competitor paid 30%, less to build the same building. But they are still operating under a six-year, it's a minimum of six years, 100% alerta, which means they don't have the tax expense that I would have in absence of this alerta. The alerta really just, it levels the playing field, and without it, a luxury product cannot be competitive. And here's what I mean. If someone else paid 30% less for a project, and they don't have a tax bill that you have, if push comes to shove, and there's a real competition for tenants, and keep the units filled, and pay the expenses, and pay the debt, that's 30% higher because you had to pay 30% more, you have no leverage, you will lose, and it won't end well financially. That's the reason why the alerta is what it is, that's the reason why the request is what it is. There's a reason why we requested what we requested, it wasn't a random throw a dart at a board, let's see where it lands. No, there's a real reason for what it is, and if you want to get, if you want to dive into it a little bit deeper, if you do the math and you take six years at 100%, which is what the competitor got, and you apply a ratio of 130%, just to adjust for inflation, it's basically what we're asking, or close. So it's really just a way to level the playing field, and if everyone supports it, it's a way to bring this project to fruition. Without it, it's really, really challenging, as long as costs stay where they are. Now, I could sit around and wait for years, but I'm an investor. I'm just like any other investor, I can't sit around and do nothing, be idle. I'll have to evaluate my options. If this doesn't go the way that we want it to go, if we don't get the support that we need. Now, Ken, is there any flexibility with the board? I don't know, I really don't know, but I'm encouraged by the fact that there's an ongoing dialogue with them, and we'll see where it takes us. So, I'm sorry, so that was, I believe that addressed the second and third points. And then the last point that I had is the lot across the street. Before I go there, actually, you know what, I mean, if you don't mind, can I address that? The property, the entire property is under AD that includes four lots. The two most significant lots are being used to build this luxury product. The other two lots, they're going to be developed, too, what it will be, your guess is, well, my guess is probably better than yours, I won't say yours, if you don't mind. But it's all going to be subject to the same process. The zoning hearing board approvals, the community's going to have a chance to chime in. And so I can't tell you what's going to happen there, but there are two adjacent lots, smaller lots, that are part of this property. I think that was all of your comments, if I missed any, please let me know.
Um, you thought around them, yes. I guess that was your answer, so I can't change your answer. I want to say thank you for explaining your process. I happen to disagree with a lot of what you said. But I think that asking our taxpayers to put the bill for 10 years is not fair to our taxpayers. The school district and the municipality are fortunate enough to at least get an earned income tax. The county doesn't get that. I did ask our assessor at the last meeting to check into what we would get, and I believe the figure came back $922.50. And when it's done, we would be getting $26,275. So, you know, that we're really hurting, and we have increased mental health, increased drug and alcohol, increased people that visit our jail. We have increased everything that we provide in services, 911 calls, we have the dispatch. And the taxpayers who live throughout the county, really, and especially Palmyra, would be picking up the tab for all of those services. And I, for 10 years, seven at 100%. And it just doesn't feel right, Jack, if you were willing to go five years with declining percentage, I would be interested. But not in the terms under 37, I'm sorry.
Yes. I would hear your point, Joe Allen. I'm sorry. We're doing some very important act. I see the long-term benefits of the increased value of that property and the increased value that part of our community needs to outweigh those.
The other thing that I think is maybe hasn't been mentioned at least today is the public safety benefit. You know, saving that neighborhood from the blight that's there, and also the toxic issues that we've eliminated. And the endorsement of the borough, they're the closest, you know, government to it, and they fully endorsed, as a matter of fact, they went to the school board meeting and they have unsolicited. So I think those are all indicators to me that, you know, this is, plus, I know we're getting $500 a year now on that property as a county. And to pop it in seven years or eight years to, you know, in the $20,000 range is long-term thinking, you know? And that's saving the neighborhood and making an investment that you're considering. And my understanding is that if you can't do it without all the support for this site, that makes sense to me. So we thank you for, you know, coming forward on a second time, and if there's any other questions, I'll take them, if not-
One more, if you need. Thank you for bringing up the safety, but I also think about these property values in general, acting as this property value right now. Property, you're talking about, it's very well. You're the investor, and it's something really nice, but I think that has an upper than the back on property values in that area.
Plus, the alerta only impacts the improvement. We still will get our $500 a year for the first seven years, so we're not losing anything by doing this.
We'll get $922.50.
So, Commissioner, Commissioner, this is correct. So I had this conversation with the taxes department office, and the thinking is as follows. The moment that a building is constructed on the property, they would be required to increase at least the land value. So the increase in the taxes, almost double, is all attributable to the land value increase.
But I guess if you never showed up at our doorstep, you'd be getting $500. They're there, I don't want to-
The property's been abandoned for a long time.
Yes. So, you know. Anything else? Uh, the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I hope there's something.
I'll second the motion, any further discussion? On favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So move, split vote, two to one, thank you. Thank you, that's your time. Yes.
Can I just ask a question quick before you leave? If this project is all luxury apartment, do you have any other property within the municipality or the county where you might be planning putting any affordable housing? Because we also need affordable housing in that municipality, but also within the county. So if you're getting the tax dollars to build luxury housing, do you have any plans to do anything anywhere else for affordable housing?
So first of all, I agree with you that there is a real need, a tremendous need. I think it's common knowledge to build affordable. I don't have any current plans to do that, not at this site. And the reason for that is people much smarter than me, people who spend a lifetime evaluating sites and determining what the highest and best uses, have determined that luxury is best suited for this particular site. Now, that doesn't mean that I'm not going to build affordable in the county. This is what I do for a living, so if the opportunity presents itself, I'm certainly open to reacting, yes.
Okay, I just know that there are some municipalities that have the requirement, if you build a certain percentage of units that are high-end units, you must also build, 10% of your units must be affordable housing. So obviously, Palmyra has nothing like that. Does the county have any kind of requirement like that?
That may be, depending on financing or the tax credits that you're pursuing, I'm not sure if that enters into that equation. You've answered, so the county doesn't have any.
Okay, I just, I know there are municipalities that do, and I don't even know of any of them within Lebanon County here. But it's probably not a bad program to think of. Okay.
Thank you. Morning. Good morning. Get yourself in.
I am Bob Downe, Director of Public Services. Here this morning, we asked the commissioners to potentially award a bid for power. This was solicited to be made Tuesday, and this came in, we've got two bids. It's out, one is daily houses, a little bit amount for that, was setting for 4,400. Better safer industries, that whole bid was 119,000. Asking the commissioners to be awarded power service.
And did this come in at a price that we were expecting?
Seventy-four thousand dollars.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve our bid from daily power service in the amount of $74,487.
Moving second there, that did. Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same signs, so move. Thank you. And the other thing is, I may have a whole minute to discuss the groundwater.
Yeah.
Ask me if you wouldn't mind. District DA, DDP announced about 36 pounds, 36 pounds, that's the amount of the groundwater. There's something that brings public awareness to the general recommendations, reduce water usage at home by five to 10%. Somewhere around either six gallons, six gallons. Something we should all be aware of, it's a secret that it's very dry. Another concern from a service perspective is obviously fire. And some that we're currently holding all the fires, need to seek the clarity of support for it, but at this point, we have not. However, maturity is supportive, we'll come back. Reputation. We've got a list of the fact. Thank you for that update. Thank you.
There's some areas of the country where water concern and poor public safety is so great because of the lack of water to provide services. There's some areas of the country where water concern and poor public safety is so great because of the lack of water to provide services and fire. Any indication from any areas in the county that that's, that's an issue?
No.
Is that question to ask?
Has not. But to get to that point, I think there's, there's you're talking about dramatically lower availability of water than we had in this area. You're thinking the west states where that's, or not at that point. Good morning.
Morning. Introduce yourself. Brian Smith with Lebanon County Christian Institute, that's Polish. So I, I'm requesting that the officials approve forty-five thousand dollars, act one three seven, affordable housing funds, or seventy-five percent of the rural assets, sixty thousand dollars. For comprehensive housing markets, twenty-five percent of the work, eight thousand, people under by the city of London. Project not exceed sixty thousand dollars. The recommendation by the Polish Homelessness and the Health Council is to go in national research.
Questions for Brian? For this theory, this is pretty fresh.
No, second, the motion, looking forward to the project. Again, we need a copy of that state data, not, you know.
We're just going to refresh. It's seventy-five percent of the cost of forty-five thousand.
Your portion, yeah, forty-five thousand, seventy-five percent of the sixty-five. The final news day decision. When you overreport. They have, already they have eight months for the time of the study.
The other question is for Brian. If you may, by saying aye.
Aye.
For safe side salute.
Thank you.
Making a good job. An infrequent visitor, but we asked everyone, actually, if you mind introducing yourself and where you're from, and then we proceed with your request.
Sure. I'm Jenelle Becker. I'm the facilities director. I submitted a request to renew the contract with our medical director. It expired June thirtieth, which was to run July first, two thousand and thirty. The current one was signed on April seventh. Same income, same doctor.
At a thousand ninety dollars a month for the E C credit.
Yes, for Dr. Shelby.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with U C M C Primary Care Hybrid Sprint for Renova Center Residence.
Second. It's been moved in second. Congratulations, my first. Right. Any questions regarding the motion? Jenelle? Not all favor of the present here by saying aye. Aye. For safe side salute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenelle. All right, I just- I never mentioned Jenelle's not here because it's not the county-related meeting.
And she's doing a wonderful job.
Well, let's see.
Let's see. Okay. First of all, we have, and I don't think I need to read it, a proclamation for Chris Smith, who is the executive director of the Y M C A Camp Jan, Camp Rocky Creek. She's obviously been there for a long time. She's served over thirty years. And she is retiring as of today. Okay. I'm sorry. I was thinking, I was mixing two different ones. Yeah. So we just have a proclamation.
I think you summarized it. Motion approved.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second. On the previous proclamation. Questions or comments? Not all favor of the present here by saying aye. For safe side salute.
Okay. Next I have for the Lebanon County Community Action Partnership Advisory Board. They would like to bring on for a three-year term, maybe Mayor Sherry Capello, Susan Wright, and Amanda Hitt. And their terms would expire at the end of December of twenty twenty-five, but those would be effective immediately.
Motion to approve the three appointments to the Community Action Partnership Board.
It's been moved in second that we approve those laws here. Questions and comments? Not all favor of the present here by saying aye.
Aye.
For safe side salute.
Okay. Then I have two disabled vets. One is Joseph Luceras of East Missbough, Niflin Street, Lebanon, and Tammy Suter of South Penn Street, Lebanon.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Then we'll give those better and say what. Requests and questions or comments?
And then the last thing I have.
All favor of the motion, if you may, by saying aye.
Aye.
For safe side salute.
Okay. Then the last thing I have is a change of signers for the Pontcharry Opera's. And this would be putting Mark Smith, Shell Singer, and Sherry Small on with Fulton Bank.
Make a motion to approve the change in signers for the Pontcharry's office.
Sure. It's been moved in second. Due to Pontcharry, any questions or comments? Not all favor of the present here by saying aye.
Aye.
For safe side salute.